Put out a more accurate RFQ, rewrite, possibly rewrite the RFQ or talk with DLR Group. Because Mark Warnicki and I talked earlier on the phone today about some of my concerns is that when you go out and you, you know, you put out an RFQ for 90 schools and then you start saying, "Okay, well, we're, nah, we're gonna peel that back to 90 or par that back to 50." You know, what's that gonna save us? I think you don't save as much because typically firms don't give you back as much money as when they're bidding up front. So I guess I have some concerns, but if Mark Summers could just, you know, just comment, if you know the number of major renovation schools that we have under the first bond issue, if you know that information, could you share that with the board? I can't remember it off the top of my head.
I would say major renovations, upper teens, maybe 20. And then, of course, there's four replacement facilities, the Belle Ryan, Western Hills, Yates and Colquhoun. So those are what come to mind. And then the rest are fire, life, safety, or technology updates.
And if I can just add to that, like Mark said, most of those are smaller projects, life and safety. Examples would be like Bancroft School. Bancroft was built in 1988 during this bond program. It only has life and safety items identified to it. There's nothing in the book for a second bond. So schools like that is what we're looking at to do this assessment. That's 28 years old, hasn't done, had any work done to it. Central Park is 24 years old. That was the first school that we put heat pumps in. We know we'll be running into replacing a large number of heat pumps in that facility. Schools like that are what we're looking for. And Mr. Scanlon, you're right, we did have a conversation and I, we decided to put out the 90 facilities at the time. That was something that we could wrap our arms around. Firms had a distinct number to work with. It was, and we knew that a Western Hills, a Belle Ryan, and a JP Lord was going to be new facilities and we wouldn't have to replace them. But with the cost per square foot, we felt would be very simple. Without, I'm sorry, we thought of every firm we hired with that cost per square foot, we could back those facilities out and it wouldn't be difficult to do. To get down and to be looking at every facility and to try to define that we want the heating system in this building analyzed, the carpet in this building analyzed, I think it would be difficult. Now we are able to, if this is approved tonight, we can sit down with DLR and work through that and probably refine this number. It's like a process that we've used before in RFQs. We're looking for a firm with the best qualifications. We feel DLR is that firm. And instead of coming to the board and saying, "Give us the authority to negotiate," without having an idea where that cost is, we asked to have a proposal provided to us, at least we know where our starting point is. Now we can negotiate a little refined, more refined number with the type of work that we need to have done in our facilities.
I mean, go ahead. Go ahead. Do I have a question?
I would just counter with, I'm not asking, you know, for carpet removal or replacement in this facility, but narrowing it down to not 90 facilities that we're asking you to go in and to look at, we're asking you to go look at 45. I think that that gives this board a better idea of what it would cost going in. I mean, $840,000 roughly, which is $190,000 more than the, than the next firm or the lower firm that was there. You know, I just have some reservations also with the, the three responses that you decided to go into the interview process. There's almost a million dollar difference, over a million dollar difference between those three firms. So it kind of brings into question, you know, was the RFQ clear and did we express ourselves to those firms what we were looking for? You know, I just feel that, you know, with all the work that we've got going on, with all the renovations and everything, that possibly maybe this is better suited for something that, you know, we do that study after September of 2017, because that's when a lot of these projects will be completed that are in that first phase, first major renovation phase for this bond. I just, I have a hard time. I agree with the facilities study and everything, but I just don't know if our timing is correct at this point in time, and that concerns me.
I would, so I have a question about this. Because sitting on the budget committee with Mrs. Kenokey, it's a challenge for us to figure out what's our cost for replacements, but we really can't know that. And we're trying to make that process a little bit better from the budget aspect. And we did ask for you to all go out and do the RFQ. So my question to you is, is there the possibility to go back and to negotiate price-wise? I mean, you mentioned the 8.4 cents. To take off specifically all the schools that we're running, or replacing, I mean, those shouldn't even be in there, and to take off schools where major work is being done. And I think, you know, in my sub-district, I have Sunny Slope, but there's also Jocelyn and Beveridge. And Norris is gonna be really changed. And so the 19 to 20 that Mr. Summers mentioned, in my mind, those come off because we should be getting that data to put into the spreadsheet or into the software. But I look at a couple of buildings in my sub-district that I've been in in the last, you know, few months. And there's some real need as far as getting some things fixed, but because we don't have anything in the system that says, "Oh, this carpet's 20 years old and it should have been replaced five years ago," or tiles should be in the hallways. And I've even had a call from a parent recently who said, "Wow, I moved here, I visited a school, it rained that day, and I went in and the carpet in the building smelled so bad. I wondered, really, I'm gonna put my kids here? I'm not used to this." So those are the kinds of things that concern me and that I think this would take care of. But my question is, can you negotiate, I mean, I'd be comfortable starting that work on whatever, 60 buildings or 55 buildings, because I think we need to know that information from a budgeting perspective. But I don't think I'm comfortable on, clearly not comfortable on all 80. Dr. Turnquist.
The answer is yes. As Mark says, we can go back now and renegotiate. The RFQ was very clear for everybody. It talked about 90 facilities. But that was based on the square footage of those 90 facilities. So everybody had the same opportunity to give us the price, and then you break it down, the number of cents per square foot. So actually, this is a level two assessment, which is what we would recommend. And the eight cents per square foot is under the norm for a level two assessment. Now, as Mark said earlier, we can go back and refine it and renegotiate this based on what we're already doing in this bond issue, and still get the kind of information that will allow the board to then build a capital facility plan, long range as well as short range, and not only determine what might be needed in the next bond issue, but what should we be doing internally on a year-to-year basis to help keep our facilities up?
So, so what are you, what would we be, if we were to take action, what would we be approving? Because clearly if, we wouldn't approve $840,000 because that's...
You would, no.
So I'm trying to understand, what would we be approving?
You would be approving our going ahead with awarding this assessment to DLR, but refining now. It's not much different than asking you to approve a, prove our ability to go negotiate a contract on other things.
And?
With that particular firm.
Okay. And so for clarification, negotiation would include?
I would suggest just approve the hiring of DLR to do the assessment and allow staff to negotiate a contract for the facilities that need to be evaluated, something on that.
I think we have legal coming forward.
The contract would come before the board for approval. So this is just simply the award to DLR. So your, the renegotiation of that process would come back to you and you would have an opportunity to look at that contract and decide if you wanted to proceed with it.
Mr. Scanlon.
I, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that in the sense that there was still a $200,000 or $190,000 bid lower. I almost feel more comfortable if we refined the RFQ to the two lowest bidders and went out and said, you know, "This is, this is what we're looking at," you know, and I guess have operations present to the board, they're a little bit, well, a much more detailed explanation of, you know, where that $200,000 value is gaining the, the district a better product. I guess, you know, that's still a large, large dollar value for, for me to try to say, "Yeah, we'll go with the, the second, second lowest bid." I'd just like more information.
If you don't mind, I guess some of the differences, I mean, I mentioned that DLR was planning on using 20 staff members, that are architects, licensed mechanical, electrical engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers. The firm with the lowest dollar was planning on using six individuals. They weren't really identified as licensed engineers. They had knowledge in building facilities, had knowledge in components, but weren't identified in their documentation of being licensed or certified. The other is that some of that inspection by the firm with the lower dollar was more of a representative type of evaluation. They talked about going in and looking at a few rooms, a few pieces of equipment, similar items, and then estimating it out or, or scaling it out to needs. I believe there's, in our opinion, there was two different types of evaluations being done. A level two, which had more detail, and that's what we're looking for. It was more geared around maintenance, replacement, repair, and things that we could put together for, to supply the board with yearly budgets on what our needs are, versus maybe what the other two firms were looking at was more large-scale facility improvements, facility changes, and at, looking at a full facility and what the needs. And that was similar to what we had done in the past when we had sat with architects and engineers in our office and determined by just going through systems and said, "Okay, the, the heating system is so old, so we need to replace it." So a little bit of difference there on the level of inspections that we're getting.
I'm gonna go Williams, Underwood, Scanlon.
So from, from what I'm hearing from, from you, Mr. Warnicki, then, is that you went with the bid that has the more value add. We're gonna get more services for some negotiated dollars?
I believe for what we're recommending, yes, we're gonna get more detail, more knowledge, better understanding of facilities that we can project out on what our needs are and how we can put budgets together.
Okay. So where I stand is, at this point, I, again, I only speak for myself, but I am comfortable with this with the caveat that once that contract comes back and we're trying to break those dollars down more. But I guess I look at, again, the value add. We're getting more information, more insight that we truly need for our schools. So that's, that's where I sit. I can't, I can only speak for myself.
The final approval would have to be the board's approval of the contract after it's winnowed down somewhat.
Ms. Underwood.
So I have one comment and two questions. So I, I came to the meeting kind of with the same thoughts that Mr. Scanlon had. I, I wanted to make sure we had a good explanation for why we weren't going with the low bidder. And I think that there are instances when we should do that. And to Ms. Williams' point, when there's a value add to the district, I think that it makes sense. And I, I really like that DLR is subconsulting or teaming with Ferris. I think bringing a specialty mechanical, electrical firm to the team is really helpful, because that's where a lot of our costs, I think, are gonna be. And with some of these older buildings and older systems. So, you know, maybe, I think any, anyone that they teamed with that was a specialty MEP firm, I think, is a great idea. And I know Ferris does good work. So I like that a lot. And to your point about DLR being local, I think that that's good, too. I, I like that as well. So one of my questions, you said that the, the DLR proposal was clearly more of a kind of a level two proposal. So I wanted, I wanted to ask if it was clear in the RFP that we were asking for a level two investigation?
We did not identify a level one, level two, or level three. We identified the systems that we wanted inspected. We want, we identified what we wanted out of the report, and then we allowed the firms to determine how they were going to go about that. And we, and I guess that's what we're looking for, is their ability to deliver the product and to provide us with the information that they would normally give us somebody to say, "Okay, if you're gonna want us to do an assessment of a building, this is what we're going to do," and let them refine their normal process to us.
So the deliverable was, we might not have used the terminology level two, but the deliverable that we wanted was clear?
I think it was.
Okay. And then my other question is, is there anything special about wrapping this up by July? I just, I don't want them to, I think there's a sense of urgency, but I also think that there's, I, I would prefer quality over, you know, getting it done on a certain timeframe and perhaps missing some things.
I think that would be part of the negotiation with DLR and, and visiting with the contract. That date was set well back in September. And we had a timetable that we were going to bring this to the board. We're approximately, almost two months behind that timetable. So I'm sure that they would probably want an extension of that to keep within the range of what their plan is. But we'd have to visit with them now since we're, we're just late with this, so.
And I would be in support of that, unless there was something special about that.
No, it was just trying to complete it before some, before the end, before the school year started, that we could get ready somewhat for the next fiscal year.
Mr. Scanlon.
You had mentioned the study that was done before that was not as thorough. What did that cost the district?
I don't remember. I apologize for that. I could look it up and get back to you. I don't remember. That was, to let you know, we had a architect, a mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer, sat with our foreman of our maintenance department in a conference room, went through documentation, and just basically went through their knowledge of all the equipment, the age of equipment, what had been repaired and what had been replaced. An example would be windows that were single pane. We just used an architect's estimate of what a replacement window would be for thermal pane. We knew the amount of glass. We put a number in. We did not walk on the site to see what the condition of the frames were and that type of thing. That's what this one will do.
And we did that every five years.
If you could let me know what that, what that cost, I would appreciate it. And I guess then the second thing, just in my mind, and I know this hasn't been a discussion at the board table, other than just when we first were talking about the, a bond issue for 2014, you know, we had kind of earmarked when the second possible bond would be going out. And, you know, maybe this is a discussion that we need to have. There will be turnover on this board after this election, so that it could change, obviously. But I personally don't think as a district that, that we would be responsibly going out for a second bond issue until 2018. I know it had been talked about 2017 originally. I just think of where we are with the bond. I'm not supportive until 2018, so I don't know if that changes our, our mindset for this facility study. But it's just something that, I think it's, it's needed, but I don't think we need to rush it. And I don't know if I can be 100% supportive of it tonight without having a, a number by, you know, if it's DLR Group with the revised number of facilities that we're looking at. And only being five of us here tonight, I don't know if that means that maybe it'd be better to, to table it just because I don't wanna, I don't want it to go away, but I, I don't wanna, I don't know if I can fully support it tonight.
Okay, Ms. America.
Lost my train of thought there for a second. I just want to touch on, I, I do, I do agree with the, sometimes it is necessary to go with the bid that's not the dollar amount lowest if the value you're getting from it is higher. And I like the fact that this would be literally going into the buildings and walking through them and looking at every room, looking at every system that's operating in our building. Because when you're in the conference room looking at, "Okay, yeah, this building has these windows, this has this," you're not seeing the effects of, "Okay, this room is partially underground and because of where the water table is, it's so humid that you have water coming into the walls." Sitting in a conference room doesn't tell you that, but going into the room, you can notice those things. And I really feel like this, yes, there is some overlap between this and a future bond issue. Because we, when we were going through the bond things, we kind of separated it out into firming up and bringing what we had up to where it needed to be with putting off things that were for our future planning and for the future growth of the district. And yes, while this would, this comprehensive assessment would have some elements of that future planning, it's also getting us into a place where we're not having to put basic maintenance in a bond issue, which is not something that we should just routinely be saying, "Well, we need to have bond issue because we need to replace sprinkler systems." That's something that we should be building into our budgeting system of, "This year we need to replace this many. This year we need to replace this many. This roof is 25 years old. It's not leaking badly yet, but maybe we should replace it so we prevent the cost of it collapsing in the future." That's what we're doing with this, is getting us on that schedule of, "We know this is the lifecycle, this is how much we need to budget. So going forward, we don't have that $400 million bond issue to take care of things that we should have been taking care of along the road."
Dr. Turnquist.
I understand Mr. Scanlon's desire for a little more information on this in terms of what buildings we are touching now in this bond, how that might change this, and also what we have spent over multiple five-year periods on the five-year facility study. I would much rather carry this over than have it defeated tonight.
So I guess the only question I would ask on that, and I agree with you, because sitting on the budget committee, we're pretty much, we have no idea, but yet we know that the complaints we hear from our principals or our parents in buildings that we know we're not gonna be doing any type of major renovation to, this bond or the next one, or maybe even, you know, five years away from that. So the only question I would ask is, are you, are you at all comfortable having them go back to negotiate with DLR for, and then bringing that back to the board? Because I don't, I don't want it defeated either, just because I know that this is an important thing. And, and it's one of the first things that Mr. Evans said when he got here was, "Wow, I can't believe you all don't have this. This is pretty unbelievable." So anyway, that's my question.
No, I'm, I'm in favor of having the administration go back and, and refine the parameters of what exactly it is we're looking for, and coming back to the board with a, you know, an updated number that DLR Group would present. And if they feel that they can go back to also Jacobs possibly, and refining that, just in order for us to have a comparison. I think the other, the other bid was well out of, out of consideration, or the proposal was well out of consideration. But I think we owe it to the taxpayers and just to this board that we, that we have a better idea of what exactly this we're looking for with this request for qualifications.
So do we need to vote on anything, or does that give you the authority to go back and negotiate for potential contract and bring a contract back to us? Or, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
If you, if you are approving our going back and working with DLR, then we would work with DLR and come back with those new figures and a contract for the board's final approval. If we're going to go back and work with two different vendors, now you've exposed everybody's prices. That's just not the way we do business, but...
Right, right. And I understand that. And I understood, I, I had the question, too, initially of, you know, why weren't we going with the lower one? I think you explained that pretty clearly for me, because that was one of the questions I came with tonight. Mr. Scanlon, are you comfortable with that, since we have exposed the prices and we need to negotiate down now?
I just don't know if it was presented, I, I understand that you said that, you know, one firm would give 20, 20 people that would be going into the buildings, the other ones were only doing six. You know, I guess when there's a spread of a significant dollar amount, you know, it'd be nice in the future as a board member to, to, you know, be a little bit more convinced as far as, yes, this value is actually worth the dollars that, that we're getting. You know, I guess it's just $200,000 a lot for, you know, the value that we're, that we're looking at. And I don't, you know, what was presented tonight, I don't know if that's enough for me to convince a taxpayer that, yeah, it is, it is worth the extra dollars, because we went forward with a $421 million bond based off of phone conversations. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's something that I wish we had done it differently. We can't go back in time, I understand that. But, you know, had we done the walkthroughs the first time, I don't think I'd have as, as big of an issue with this. But I kind of do now.
Ms. Williams.
So I guess I have a question and a comment. My question is, so if we bring this back, we will not be bringing this back until March 21st. So my question is, what does that do to this process? Dr. Turnquist.
Well, you know, one of the reasons we were pressing forward with it was because the board was urging us to do it.
Right.
Because we had never done this before. And so we, we wanted to develop something that would allow the board to do this kind of fiscal planning in terms of capital facility plan. However, that doesn't mean we can't slow it down. And if you feel very strongly that we should take the two lowest bids and go back and redefine exactly what we want, separating out those things that are being worked on in the bond now, and ask for a new proposal from each of them, we can do that. It will be changed. It's not as though we're saying, "Here's what somebody bid, now you underbid them." That's not very ethical. We don't do business that way. But if we are redefining the square footage, for example, in terms of removing buildings that are being replaced, or being built new, or having major renovations, then everybody's starting with the same square footage, anyway. Mark?
I was gonna say, if we're gonna go back and relook at how we're going to do this, it's not going to be all just a square foot cost, I don't believe, if we're gonna go back. And, and the reason I'm saying that, now we could be looking at, if we want to look at schools that do not have, or has HVAC systems, and we just want to look at that, we may want to just go to the firm and say, "What would it cost us to evaluate that HVAC system?" I mean, now I'm putting two firms again. I, it's, it's not just a full facility, it's components.
I think we were still talking about the full facility. When we were talking about it, we were just taking out the buildings that are under major renovation or are being replaced. I'm sorry.
It's okay. No. So, so here's, here's my thought, is that this does need to get done at some point, and why are we gonna continue to put it off? We've... We've gone through the process, your role as staff is to bring us your recommendation of what you think is best for the district, our role is to say, okay, we like that, or we don't like that, or we want some tweaks. So my thought is, if this is what you're recommending to me, again, this is your area of expertise. So at some point I have to say, we trust you, you have done much great work, you've been very thoughtful of the dollars. My consideration for this is that I believe that you are going to do the right thing. I also believe that if we can get past this conversation tonight, I do believe that your team can find some dollar savings and bring that cost down. I think that's what the ask is, is do we as a board trust our staff to go and do this and, and get the value add and bring those costs down? And so I get where Mr. Scanlon is saying, you know, we're, we're talking about all the buildings, but I would like to, if we can get past this, bring that contract back that's more specific in, we're only going to do those 45 buildings and this is what we're going to do. I think that, maybe that can kind of get past some of the angst that we're having on the side of the table. Again, but you're the experts, and my job is to trust your recommendation and ask those questions. I have not yet seen something that you haven't put your word on, Dr. Turnquist, or your staff, and so for me, I have the face that you'll do that. And the second part of this is, if that contract comes back and it's not what, as a board member, we think it should be, we can say no.
Mrs. Neelis Prash.
I just want to add to this process with regard to if we, we have to follow our policy, which means that if we would take it back out to multiple people, you would have to open it back up through that process. So it's either DLR, or it's we should take it back out and go through a different process to get the parameters that the board would want in an RFQ. Otherwise, we can negotiate with DLR because they are the recommendation that the staff is making, otherwise we won't be following our policy, and so we need to go and take it back out to everyone, we can't just take it out to two.
I wondered about that, and I guess it also concerns me from the standpoint of the staff is bringing us a recommendation that in the future that could inhibit future, I guess, RFQ proposals from other firms, if they think that we're going back out. I understand the process was maybe not perfect for all of us sitting here, but there's opportunity for negotiation, so, Mr. Scanlon?
I guess the, the problem that I have is, you know, with just negotiating with the DLR Group, is they were not the low bidder. And we are changing the scope in our request for qualifications, request for proposals. We're going from selling those firms that, yeah, we're going to build 90 houses, to, oh, nope, we're going to cut that in half, we're going to cut it two-thirds. So that is changing the scope, that does happen in the construction world, to where projects get modified and the scope changes, and they do go back out for bid, if we have to open it up again. You know, I, you know, I think maybe we have to do that, just not, if it were the low bidder, and we're renegotiating with the low bidder, I could, I could validate that and say, hey, they were low, and the scope changed, and we're going to, we're going to let them, you know, look at the new scope, and they were low before, so, you know, most likely they'd be low again. But when we're dealing with somebody that's not the low bidder, and we're redefining the scope, you know, and we're saying, well, this second low bidder is adding value, I think we need to validate that to the public. And it's just, I, I know my background is in the constructed industry, and so it's just something that, on other issues, yeah, I might not have a, have an objection to it, but I do to this one, sorry.
So you're asking staff to go out for all new RFQ?
If they can't go back out to the two low bidders...
They cannot because of policy.
Then I would have to say that, I think that, and in the future, I think we need to write more accurate scopes, I really do. I mean, if we're, and maybe we weren't clear as a board enough to say, hey, we're not looking for all these schools that are in, and I fault myself because I've been pushing for the facility, capital facility assessment, and maybe I should have been more precise in saying, you know, we don't need to go out to the ones that we, to the schools that we are renovating in this bond, the major renovations in this bond program. And if that created confusion, I apologize.
Dr. Turnquist.
I would just like to comment that it was a good RFQ. We were asking for qualifications, and the qualifications involves the methodology that the firm is going to use. They demonstrate their qualifications by the methodology, and the methodology of the firm that's being recommended was more in-depth and broader and more substantive than the others.
Mr. Evans.
We, we understand the difference in the low bid versus high, I mean, we, we had a long conversation about it too, because we kind of said the same thing, I kind of said the same thing. We really got to be able to define and describe why these extra dollars add the value to say it's worth it. And to be quite honest, I said with staff after a meeting with them for an hour and kind of walking all through it, okay, I understand it, but I said, what if the board wants to go with the low bid? And staff said, well, we can do that too. We can go with Jacobs, it won't be, the scope won't be quite as intense and detailed as what you get, but you're also not paying as much. I mean, there is, there's a give and take on that too. You're getting a Chevy instead of a Cadillac. That's kind of my analogy, that's probably crude, I suspect, Dr. Turnquist, but you're giving more of a Cadillac.
It's not crude, because they're both good cars, but they're both General Motors. And that is correct, we did say that, when we met with Mr. Evans. If the board says, go with the low bid, and you know, I'm certainly a fan of Jacobs for multitude of reasons, it's a different scope, it's a different level of depth, but we said, if the board wants us to go with the low bid, we'll do that.
Ms. Williams.
I guess my challenge with this now is, is that, one, everyone is paying attention to this because they want to know what the process is, and I think that we're, we're kind of messing up our own processes. And two, we, I mean, this is another one of those things, is that we have one time to get this right, and this is an opportunity for us to get this right. If that means that we're, you know, doing a little bit more negotiating for me, I'd rather us do a little bit negotiating and get the job done right the first time, because I don't want to be responsible for, we're going to go with the lower, lower bid, and we're not getting those services, and lo and behold, six months, a year down the line, we're looking like, wow, we should have spent the extra dollars or negotiated harder, because now we have problems that we didn't, weren't addressed or weren't documented. And I just, I see this as, we're, we're only going to hurt ourselves in this, and so I just wanted to put that out there. I know where I stand on this. Again, I trust the recommendation, I trust what you do, this is what you do. I know that your hearts are in it, you want our buildings to be top-of-the-line facilities, and if we're not willing to do this work, we're not going to have top-of-the-line facilities. And then we would have to ask taxpayers to do more bond work, and I just, I just don't see this as a positive play if we go back to the drawing board and start again. And, and also, there's been a lot of staff time wasted if we do this process and we start over.
Ms. Underwood.
So, I, I think that, I do kind of, I feel a sense of urgency with this, because this tool is enabled, is informing us to make decisions later, and the better information we have, the better decisions we can make. And, and it's about being able to formulate capital facilities plans and bonds, and, to Mr. Scanlon's point, we didn't have the best information the first time around with the first bond. And to me, a more in-depth analysis is just, it's worth the money because it's going to better inform our decisions. And I go back, I went back to my notes from the Council of Great City Schools breakout session that I went to a year and a half ago, and they said that for every dollar of preventative maintenance that you do, you save $4 in ultimate cost. So I just think about the time that we're potentially lengthening this process, and 70 buildings are sitting out there with potentially, you know, something that's making them inefficient, and all the dollars that we're wasting by not getting to those buildings and performing an analysis, and then getting the process going on whatever it is, a bond or otherwise, to get that addressed. So I think that that $200,000, we've got to think, big picture, that $200,000 is really pennies, if you think about the amount of building stock that OPS owns, and the fact that we just need a comprehensive plan that, that is in-depth and has information that we can all say, that's, that's the best information that we could ever get on our buildings, that we can feel confident about. So that's where I'm at on, on that, I suppose. And I would hate to see us, I would hate to see us wait another month.
So I guess I would just go back, Mr. Scanlon, are you at all comfortable if staff went back to DLR, did a negotiation, you could still vote no on the contract if you weren't comfortable with it at that time? But to get us moving in the process, I'm at the same place Ms. Williams is, if, and I had said to Mr. Evans even yesterday, someone's going to need to explain to me why we go with a bid higher than the lowest bid, and if you can articulate that and convince me that you're providing a greater service to the taxpayers of this district, then I'll be supportive of that. And that's where I'm at now, especially knowing that they're partnering with an engineering firm, and knowing the problems that we had when we've gone into the buildings that we currently have, and knowing, and I vaguely remember, and so I don't want to give a number on that facility, five-year study, but it was not inexpensive by any means. And so, I guess, would you be at all comfortable with that?
I don't know, because I think we've wasted so much money in the past. I don't want to waste more money on studies that are not producing the results that we need. And I, you know, I, you know, I think those five-year studies, we've been wasting money, we haven't been doing them correctly, and I know we're trying to move forward and do, do new things, but I don't know if, if I have the confidence that we're moving forward in the proper way. I agree with getting into the buildings and everything, but I don't know if it's been relayed to me enough that, you know, that $200,000 difference does add that value. I don't think the, you know, being done by July 2016, or if we extend it, say, three months by, you know, even September, October of 2016, I don't know if that gains us much value as a district. So I'm, I'm still struggling to, to see that value of the, of the, the value of the difference of $200,000, and, and, you know, I still have, have issues that, you know, we didn't have a better scope, that we had it narrowed down to the, the schools that are not involved in the major renovations and the current bond. So I, I mean, I know it's delaying it, but I would prefer to, to table it until a more accurate RFQ, or, you know, refined. I'd be up for allowing the district to go back and negotiate a more, or present DLR Group with a more accurate scope, and having them provide a proposal. But they, I think they also need to emphasize, the district needs to emphasize what that added value would be, but I, I don't want to just blankly say, yeah, well, let's go with DLR Group.
Okay, Merrick.
I, and I just got to throw this out there, if we want to talk about wasting money, we have wasted so much staff time and money, because this is at least the second time that our board has directed staff to go out for an RFQ or an RFP. They've brought back their educated recommendations based on what they do day in and day out, and our board has spent hours questioning them over the recommendations that they've made. And it makes me a little angry, because I do trust that our staff know what they're doing. I don't think the RFQ is inaccurate, yes, we, and that's, I also don't think we're changing the scope of what's being done, we're not changing the work that's being done, we're changing the number of schools that's being done at. And I hear us reference the $200,000 difference over and over and over again. Going back to directing our staff to go back and negotiate with DLR based on, well, we're not going to do 90 schools, we need to do this number of schools, when we take out the ones that are having major work, that may completely reduce that. They may say, well, we don't need to have 20 staff, we need to have 10. Where I don't see how if you have, if you're only planning to use six staff, reducing the number of buildings, you're probably not going to be able to reduce that small of a number of group. I also, I don't like the precedent we're setting of saying, all right, we did an RFQ, we got back good results, and our staff is making a recommendation, but we don't like it, so we're going to send it out for another RFQ. It's not, it's not a good practice. And eventually, if we keep doing that over and over again, we're going to get to a point where nobody responds, because they don't want to deal with us, and they don't want to know that, I'm going to put in an RFQ for this, my fees, all of my stuff is going to be out there in public, and the board's just going to say, no, we're going to go back out, we're going to change it and go back out again. It's not, it's not a good precedence to be setting. And speaking of wasting money, echoing what Ms. Underwood said, we're wasting money not doing anything, because every minor fix we do, or preventative maintenance that we're not doing because we don't know about it yet, is money that we're effectively wasting in the long term.
Dr. Turnquist.
Well, I think what I just heard, Mr. Scan, thank you, first of all, Ms. Merrick, and all of you for your confidence. I think what I just heard Mr. Scanlon said was he was comfortable if we would go back and talk with DLR and come back with a contract that you then would say yea or nay to with DLR. I think I heard you say that, but I, but I would point out to you that staff was directed to get a comprehensive, in-depth proposal for analysis of facilities that would go far beyond what in my view was repeated five-year facility studies that were inaccurate, inadequate, and that were costing money and not doing the job. And staff looked at the responses, this has been their life's work. They looked at it and honestly assessed this proposal as in the best interest of the district, and only then did they open the prices. And still felt that they would recommend this one because of its quality, because of its breadth and its depth, and some of the details. For example, that the data can be uploaded into our existing facility software system instead of having to invest in a whole new software system.
Mr. Scanlon.
A caveat to that was that the district can better explain the value that's added by selecting or by recommending the DLR Group. And I would say on any proposal or RFQ or any bid that you don't go with the lowest bidder, that it is explained not only to the board but to the public, because there is a lot of gray area there that I think we need to explain when we're spending more tax dollar money than, than the lowest bid.
So, big question here, sorry. I just want to make sure I understand where we're at. Are we okay to move forward with a vote to send staff back, get a, get a better explanation, and clearly negotiate a lower price based on additional work? Are we, are we comfortable to move forward in that way?
On a minimized scope, yeah, not additional work, but minimized scope.
Right, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I meant additional work that DLR could provide. They bring back a contract, minimize, minimizing the work that's done, but explaining why we're paying. paying a little bit more in some kind of a detailed table or format. Are you comfortable with that?
But without diminishing the scope in terms of the quality of the assessment?
Just the number of buildings.
The methodology.
Just the number of buildings that we will have them inspecting.
Okay. Okay, so, do we have a motion to send staff back to negotiate with DLR on minimizing the scope of the work that they would be doing, and also to have staff provide us a more detailed analysis in document, written form, of the additional expertise that staff believes that DLR would be providing to us? So moved. Motion by Ms. Underwood, is there a second? Second by Ms. Williams, is there any other discussion? Okay. Do you have that, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, that's almost a Justin Wayne motion.
I know. I was trying to make him feel at home, even though he's not here.
Yes.
All right, so roll call, roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Marika.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. All righty. That was, that was good discussion, so thank you all very much. Answered a lot of questions. All right, so with that, we do have one receipt of report, which is the ESU CC Board Minutes. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Personnel, Litigation and Legal Advice.
Is there a second? Second, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Marika. Roll call, please.
Underwood.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Marika.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. Please note, or let me remind the Board, that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel, Negotiations, Real Estate, Litigation, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 10:27 PM.